Hi, welcome to the Village of Buchanan May 6, 2025 Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna do the approval of the minutes and then we have a guest here this evening that is, would like to speak. So, for the March 25, 2025 Special Meeting and also Workshop Meeting, April 1, 2025 Special Meeting, April 1 Board Meeting, April 8 Organizational Meeting, and the April 9, 2025 Budget Hearing. Are there any questions, comments?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, on the April 8, I know my name is on there, but in the voting, it has former trustee Wheeler, I think, and that was both on the 8th and the 9th. Yeah. But otherwise, no.
Okay, anyone else? No, we're good, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have Lisa, so when you come up, please, you know, state your name and, and give us some information about you, and, uh, thank you, thank you.
Hi, everyone, good evening. For those of you that haven't met me yet, my name's Lisa Misschordy, and I'm a foster parent recruiter for Together for Youth, and I service Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland Counties. Together for Youth is a nonprofit organization working across New York State to support children and families through foster care and community-based programs. And right now, we're focused on the critical and growing need of foster parents within Westchester County. On average, 70 children enter foster care every day in New York State. These kids are in need of a safe and stable and loving home, sometimes just for a little while, but others, it's longer. But in many areas, including right here in our own backyard, there is just simply not enough foster homes. So that's why we've launched our Go for Purple for Kids in Care Campaign. It's simple and yet a powerful way for individuals, families, business, and the community to show their support and help raise awareness. So we're asking everyone, not just you guys, but everyone, to take a pledge. You can do this by going to for TogetherForYouth.org-go/purple. Then you just can display purple, wear purple in your home, at your business, wherever is comfortable for you. Take some photos or take a video, and don't forget to just tag us. Mostly, the most important thing is spreading the word. You never know who in your circle might consider becoming a foster parent or supporting a family who does. So just please visit our website for TogetherForYouth.org to learn more. And I just want to give a thank you to all of you and to Mayor Nickravacher for allowing me to share this message tonight. Together for Youth, we can ensure more kids in care have what they deserve, and that's a safe place to land and a chance to thrive. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa, for coming in and spreading the word. And then also, the residents will see for this month, the lights out at the circle are in purple, so in support of that. Okay, comments from the floor, agenda items only? No, okay. So, under new business, continuation of public hearing regarding parking restrictions on intersections. We are hoping to resolve this this evening. So I'd like to make a motion, opening the public hearing regarding the parking restrictions on intersections. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, there has been a lot of discussion around this. We have gone all over the village, from having signs at every intersection, from deciding that probably wasn't a good idea, and then we finally got to the point where there were two intersections that are dangerous intersections that was brought to our attention by residents. And so this evening, what we're going to do is, we are going to vote on the intersection of Third Street, going from the corner of Third Street, I'm trying to think, going east, about 90 feet, there'll be a sign that goes up there, no parking from here to corner. It's a very difficult corner, a very difficult intersection. If you get to it, you can't see to the left. The other intersection is on Lake Drive, and that is also from Lake Drive, going east, about 90 feet, there'll be a sign there for no parking. It's for safety for our residents coming into those intersections. So, any comments or questions from the board? Because I know, we were gonna vote on it last month, but the problem was the, the residents that are affected by that weren't notified. We also all got a letter from a resident on Henry Street, and she was very much in favor of it, but it also brings to light there are other issues, noise issues there. So, we'll have to address it, because if it was in front of her house, they're moving the cars, and it will be in front of somebody else's house. So, that is where the group home is on Henry Street. So I think during change of shift, there's a lot of noise, and so, we, we will make sure that those residents, if there's an issue, call the police and have that addressed. Any comments from the floor? There's Bob Wheeler. Okay, all right. So I would like to make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised. Oh, come up, Lisa, please, thank you.
I'm not sure I hit the right time.
Oh.
So, agenda items, meaning the items all discussed in section four? Yes?
Correct.
Oh, all right. Well, let's, we're in the middle of the public hearing, so what I will, you want to do comments from the floor?
Yeah, I'd rather do them.
Either I'll go back to that, or when we get to that item, I'll, you know, you can speak then, okay? All right. So, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, if there are no other comments. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion regarding those two intersections, Lake, as I already mentioned, Lake Street, 90 feet east, there'll be no parking, and there'll be a no parking sign there from, from corner to 90 feet. Also, on the intersection of Third Street, on Henry Street, 90 feet going easterly, there'll be a parking sign, no parking sign there from here to corner. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding the proposed zoning text amendments, modifying lot coverage within the M1, M2 districts. Our planner, Dave Smith, has been here several times. We've discussed this many a time. So I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, what this is, is really changing the lot coverage in M1, M2 from 50%, I'm sorry?
Do I have the wrong one?
This is the, this is the.
Sorry, I have an old one that said, "A public hearing regarding franchise agreement."
That's next, that's next, that's next.
Thank you, sorry. No, I have an old one.
Yeah, I have a new one, once you put it in.
Yeah, B is the.
No, the one to the right there.
Stephanie's trying to keep us in line. Thank you, Steph, thanks for questioning that. So, um, what we're trying to do is make equal the C1, C2 overlay district, which is 75% lot coverage, and now we're changing the M1, M2 from 50% to 75%. So does anyone have any comments on that? And like I said, Dave Smith, our planner, was here at many meetings going over this, so.
Mayor, if I may, just for the record, too, just to make sure that this is a referral from the zoning board, they wanted the village board to consider this as well. That's how it started, so the public, now that's where it started from.
All right, good, thank you. Yep. Okay. So any comments from the floor? Okay. So I would like to make a motion, then, to close the public hearing on the lot coverage requirements. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I'd like to make a motion, modifying lot coverage in the M1, M2 zoning districts. We will be adopting a negative declaration under CEQA that the proposed action, changing lot coverage from attorney, our attorney, 40% and 50% to 75%. So each, so the M1, M2 at this time, after this, will be 75, allowed 75% lot coverage. Is more in character with the M1, M2 zoning districts and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Therefore, an environmental impact statement is not needed, no further review is necessary. Also, the M1, M2 areas mostly are industrial area, so you're looking at the Entergy property, Entergy, I'm sorry, the whole tech property, I can't get Entergy out of my head, and also where our sheet rock plan is, and also, I believe, on the easterly part of the village is an M1 area.
Where the WIC is.
Right, where WIC is, and also where the transmission lines are towards the, towards the highway.
Correct.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the modifications, code 211-15, entitled Table of Bulk Regulations, Attachment 2, Column 12, modifying lot coverage from 40 and 50 to 75% in the M1 and M2 zoning districts. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next is.
Teresa, I don't, when do you want to bring John on for the pool?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. John, I apologize, I forgot you were there. John is our, our pool person, so yes, I don't want to have him wait through the whole meeting. So yes, John can, can come on now.
No problem.
So, just to give the board an update, at the last meeting, John wasn't there, but the board did have a discussion regarding some features, so I, I updated John on the recommendations that would go with the mushroom and some circular little spray features. So John wanted to, he got some prices together, wanted to tell the board what it is, and if everything comfortable with it, he could start moving forward to the county department to help. So John, go ahead, update the board what you found.
All right, first of all, I just wanted to apologize, I intended to be there tonight. I got halfway into the drive, and found out the trippers had bare mountain closed.
Oh, boy.
Oh, wow.
But, I'll share the screen with you. Are you able to see that drawing of the pool right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, one of the concerns I heard was regarding how much of the space in the pool the mushroom fountain would take up. So this blue circle here, that is the larger of the mushroom fountains. I have a manufacturer that we've worked with in the past, been very happy with their products. This is a seven foot six diameter mushroom, which is the largest that that company offers. So, plan wise, you can see, I mean, it takes a decent amount of the, the deeper portion of the pool, but less than a third.
Yeah.
And then, in the section views, you can get an idea of, this is the coping of the pool, this is the floor of the pool, and here's the top of the mushroom. It's a seven foot clearance from the base of the mushroom cap down to the pool floor. So that just gives you an idea proportionally of what this mushroom would look like in your pool.
What's the water depth?
John, John, the question, what's the depth of the water in that area?
18 inches.
Okay.
This smaller rectangle shape, and then down below, this post-up looking thing, you had asked about the, the spray hoops. This is the height of it, it's eight feet high.
Oh, wow.
So it would stand up eight feet above the entry ramp, and then I've shown it just on the dry side of the entry ramp. The manufacturer recommends that it, this is more of a spray feature, intended for a splash pad, they have no problem with it being incorporated into a pool design. They recommend that if we could, to keep it out of the water, just for longevity of the product. So, you can see, this is gonna take up a fairly small portion of the entry. They do require that we install it in a flat area. So what we can do is, half of the ramp would be, I don't want a tall slope for ADA compliance, but then the half where you entered through the hoop, we would make that a little bit steeper on the approach to it, so that we can create a flat area here, and then match up with the, the slope of the rest of the pool just beyond it. So, this is the, the catalog sheet for the mushroom fountain. You know, you can see on the bottom of the page here, that is the mushroom fountain, and they also have on the page here, a picture where you can see the mushroom fountain, and then also the spray hoops adjacent to each other. This is a little bit taller mushroom than the one we're looking at, for this pool, with only 18 inches of water, it didn't make a lot of sense to have this mushroom be significantly taller. They do make it up to eight foot clearance, I didn't see a lot of reason to break it up that high. And this is just the, the spray hoops. You can buy them in sets, but the pricing is per unit, there's no discount if you buy multiple units. So, as far as pricing, the mushroom fountain, just the purchase price, is a little bit over $7,000. The freight on it would be approximately $3,000.
Wow.
Depending on how it's purchased, you know, if the municipality purchases it directly, you may be tax exempt, which would eliminate any sales tax on it. In addition to install, to buying it, we have to install it, it requires six times the flow rate of the entire pool, just for the mushroom. So there will be a dedicated set of equipment for it, the plumbing, recirculation pump, main drains, to operate the mushroom. And then, it's, it's a larger pump to accommodate that flow rate, and then that comes with a, a separate computer to control the flow rate, and then the UV system. So, all together, installed for the mushroom fountain, you're looking at probably about $80,000.
Wow.
For a mushroom.
For a mushroom. It's amazing.
Seven grand for the actual mush.
Yeah.
Eighty, so you're looking at eighty-nine cents.
For the UV.
We had told previously about the, the UV alone is gonna cost $35,000.
So you can start to track that off, right?
So it's like 90 grand for the mushroom.
UV's mandatory anyway. Yeah, for any feature, yes.
You have to.
Well, for any feature of this magnitude.
John, where is he being shipped from?
The UV cost varies based on how much water it has to treat.
So the question, I think the board is talking back and forth, if, without the mushroom, and with the mushroom, what's the difference in the UV cost?
Well, without the mushroom, we don't need UV.
Without any feature, no UV, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I think he did mention when we started, that the UV was gonna be pricey.
And on the mushroom, is that on all the time, or is that controllable? You can turn it on and off when, when you like, when you, when you want to?
No, we have a dedicated pump for it, so you can control that separately.
Okay.
The pool will have to run 24/7, but the mushroom, you can turn on and off whenever you want.
And what about the spray tunnels? Would you?
And the spray tunnels, is that part of the overall pool filtering system?
Now, in Westchester County, any feature has that be connected to a UV system. So, if we, if we do the, the spray tunnels, that brings in the requirement for UV as well.
So that would be the same UV system that the mushroom will have?
Unfortunately, yes, they do not base their, their UV sizing criteria on just the flow of the feature. Once we have a feature, the entire pool has to be UV treated.
Understood, but, but, but putting the hoops in doesn't increase the cost of the UV system, it's the same cost for the mushroom and the UV system?
Correct, whether the, whether the feature uses five gallons a minute or 5,000 gallons a minute, the UV would be the same.
So John, if we went with both options, would you, would you be able to tell us what the total, total price would be? Because I know you came up with one price for the pool, and if we added mushroom 80,000.
Yeah, mushroom is 80, how much for the hoop, for the, to the hoop?
If we, if we installed both, the mushroom and the hoop, you'd be a total of about 96,000.
And that's just one, one hoop?
Correct.
Okay, because I see, like, in the picture, there's several.
You can add more if you want to, yes.
So that's another 100,000.
Each hoop, the purchase price of each hoop is $6,500.
6,500 for each hoop, so you can add more hoops if you want to.
How much for?
6,500.
John, would these, would these two spray features both be coming from the same manufacturer?
Correct.
Okay, so the 3,000 in shipping would be for both items?
The shipping, if you were to buy both, the shipping would cover, you know, there would be no additional shipping cost for adding in this spray fountains.
And where are these being shipped from?
That I do not know.
Okay. Just seems a little steep on shipping.
It'd be cheaper for us if, if it was in New York State or Connecticut or whatever, just get the truck and go pick it up.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Or go with a local guy to.
Okay, can you find out where they're shipped from?
I can, I mean.
It's not, it's not worth it.
Yeah, no, for 3,000.
If we break it and transport.
That's true, too. They're probably all plastic.
Anthony's right, it's true, yep.
That's true. Well, it's a good thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, just when you see the shipping costs, it's like, wow.
$3,000.
It's not Amazon Prime.
No, no.
Try shipping a fiberglass pool, ask John how much that costs.
Oh, my God, yes.
So.
Should be anything costs, of course.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, fiberglass pool, you need to.
So do you want to go to one hoop or multiple hoop? Do you want to go to another hoop? That's a question, too.
So right now, we're at the 100K with adding the features. What was the price? It was around $200,000? I'm trying to remember, for the base pool itself.
So what was the base pool estimate price, John?
Apparently, we're in the midst, around 450.
With the features.
I thought I remembered around 200, but is that with, with the features?
With the features.
Okay, all together, okay, all right. All right, so.
They're shipping from, I just found out while we're talking here, shipping from Oregon.
Yeah, we're not going to Oregon.
And each hoop, what you said, was 6,500, John?
To buy it, yes.
Just that.
Just to buy it.
Any idea how much to install?
Usually double the cost.
About $18,000 for, yeah, 20,000.
For each hoop?
For each, right?
So that, but, you're gonna do it.
Now, if you had two of them.
How much space are we gonna have for all these features, though?
Go ahead, John, I'm, if you had to.
If you did two of them, are you looking at two in a line as they're showing, or would you want to spread across the beach?
Then you'd have to change the entry.
Yeah, Steve brings up a good point, yeah. Plus, I think two, you might be a little too crowded.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a big pool.
No, it's, it's, you're dealing with a very small footprint, so.
What was the square footage of the pool, John? Is that what the board can know?
We are currently.
What's the length and width, that way it helps, too.
We currently have 540 square feet, and the length of the overall pool is 34, but the, the wet portion of it is 27 feet.
Yeah, it's not that big.
And the width is 20 feet.
27 by 20.
It's not that big.
Yeah. So, I, I know we have in our recreation fund approximately 225,000. We're gonna be discussing at the next workshop, the capital.
Correct.
Projects and stuff, so technically, you know, we would need another 225, but I think we have that within the capital project, so the board would just have to make a decision, you know, if we go forward with this and take that out of the capital money.
Rec fees. Well, don't forget, we're gonna have rec fees coming in from AMS.
AMS and Carbone, correct.
And that will replace.
So by the time this pool gets done, the AMS rec fees will probably hit the books.
Be coming in.
Right.
Correct.
So should cover, cover our expenses, so. I mean, I, I do like the idea, I like the hoop, I like the mushroom, I don't think it's too crowded.
It looks good, though.
Yeah. And you're right, I think if we add any more features, it's just gonna, it's gonna be too small. But with those two features, I, I think, I think that would, I think that would suffice. I agree.
You don't wanna overdo the features, because there are gonna be people that go into this pool that don't want to get sprayed.
Yeah.
Especially some of the little kids, yeah, they're not really thrilled about getting, you know, sprayed like that.
I wouldn't want to get sprayed.
And some of the big kids, too.
All right, so I think we got a pretty good idea where we're going with this.
So is this good for him to go forward?
I'm good with him. Is everybody else okay, or do you want?
I'm fine with it.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, John, so you're good to go, my friend.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, have a good night.
You too, now, bye-bye.
All right, the next, I'm gonna make a motion, open the public hearing regarding a new renewal franchise agreement with Verizon. Can I may have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So not too long ago, we did the renewal for Optum, and that was, I'm trying to remember, it was a, was it a 15-year agreement with Optum? And so now Verizon came due, and you know what, Marcus, I was looking through the legal agreement here, I remember it being five years.
Five years, correct.
Yeah, because I'm seeing 15 years here unless they're referencing it to the other.
Yeah, it's five years.
The board also with what we did with Optum, we had a choice of going to 2% to 5% with the fee, and the board chose to stay with 2%, which helps the residents lower the cost of the service. Also, we have a PEG grant, which is money that goes towards, goes towards like equipment for our broadcasting, and if I can remember from memory, I think it was like $6,000 or seven.
It was 6,000, they agreed to go up to seven.
Okay.
So the new one has 7,000.
So, we haven't had any problems with them, because that's part of what it, it speaks to in the agreement. So, are there any comments or questions from the board on this?
No.
It's pretty straightforward, it's pretty straightforward. Any comments or anything from the, the audience, no? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the cable franchise agreement between the Village of Buchanan and Verizon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So there is a, a resolution here that is kind of lengthy.
Yeah, you can, you can just do the top.
Let's do the top part. Whereas the Village of Buchanan is a franchising authority in accordance with Title, Title 6 of the Communications Act, and is authorized to grant one or more non-exclusive franchises pursuant to Article 11, the New York Public Service Law's Amendment, and Title 16, Chapter 8, Parts 8990.60 through 899 of the Official Compilation of Coes, Rules, and Regulations of the State of New York. Whereas the grant at Verizon New York, a corporation duly organized under the applicable laws of the State of New York, the franchisee effective as of. So this is, this is where I got a little confused, a non-exclusive initial franchise, so this is referencing the previous one of 15 years.
Correct.
Okay. So this is all, all this legalese stuff that our attorney read and is comfortable with? And, and whereas the project as proposed has been determined to be a Type 2 action pursuant to the regulations of the New York Department of Environmental Conversation, Conservation, promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So as I mentioned, it's a five-year term, it's, the fee is 2%, and I would like to make a motion to approve this renewal agreement. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, so the next one is, we've been working on this for a while, we. Um, we, uh, started with another company for the cell tower, um, on the bottom of First Street. That seems to be the best place to put a cell tower, people have been complaining for years with the lack of cell service here in the village and the problems with the cell service, lots of dropped calls. So, um, the original company that we worked with, it did not work out, that was the company that the town of Cortland was dealing with. Um, the special, uh, the person that was hired by the village to look into this, um, and actually negotiate an agreement, has another company, uh, with better terms for the village. Um, so Marcus, if you would like to review this for everyone?
Sure, the, um, the, um, in summary, uh, there was the lease agreement, it was on village-owned property, the village will receive the lease payments, the public will have access to better, better cell service, as well as will have, um, access to the tower for emergency services, for police, fire, ambulance, whoever you want to deal with. And the biggest difference between the other company and this company was the lease terms and the payments. We're probably gonna receive probably double what the other, what the other company would have done at the same time, and allow us as more carriers join on, we got a higher percentage of that lease payment as well. So it's beneficial to both the taxpayers, by extra revenue coming in, as well as cellphone users to provide better service for everybody in the region.
And then also, the upper part of this cell tower will be used for our emergency services, police and.
Yep, correct.
And, uh, fire and, and EMS, which is great.
And no cost to the village.
We like that price.
And just for the public to know, there's a still a public process have to go through, they have to go through the planning, there'll be a public hearing to be held, so people can, if they have any questions on the actual location, this is just the lease agreement to start the process, to start the public process.
Alright, and they, they are aware, I did look through this, they are aware that there is a forty-two inch pipeline in the vicinity of that area, uh, be actually behind it, okay, cause that's important. They have to be told very clearly that no one drives any equipment or puts any equipment over that, that pipeline.
They got the area where the, um, easement is and where the property cannot be touched. They'll be coming over the dirt road between the salt shed and the deep, and the DPW, and the field, and working their way into the property.
Yeah, cause there's that, that, uh, where our paper road starts, but there's the bar that it's Con Edison has the lock to that, but do we also have it? Oh, it's before that, they'll be entering.
Exactly, correct.
Alright, good. Yeah, it's just have to be very clear that they can't touch that area.
And they'll be required to do a more detailed survey as well, and they'll be doing that as well, that's part of the agreement, to have to do a detailed survey.
Yeah, I did see something in here about a survey, which is good, okay, good.
And this is a five-year term, and there's five, I think I read, there's.
Renewals.
Five automatic renewals.
Correct.
Of five years each.
Correct.
So it's basically a four-year.
And the other company wanted twenty years.
Yeah.
Automatically, yes.
Yep, so this is good. Alright, so, um, alright, I, if there's no one else that would like to comment, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, um, so now I'd like to make a motion to approve the land option and lease agreement with, um, Hemphil. Hemphil Corporation, and, um, for the initial term of, of, uh, five years with renewables, uh, the revenue share, um, the tenancy pay to landlord, an amount equal to twenty-five percent of the recurring revenue. And Marcus had mentioned the benefits of it, um, so I'm just happy that we can get this started. Like I said, that over the years, there's been a lot of, a lot of problems with, uh, our cell service, so this should improve it, and I think the residents will be happy, it's an out-of-the-way place. So I'd like to, um, make a motion to approve the lease agreement. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. The next is a motion for unpaid water charges to be re-levered to the tax bill, this is something we do every year. These are people who have not paid their water charges, and these are not the current charges, these are charges that go back, right Cindy, to the previous, the previous year. So, um, what happens is now these charges that they haven't paid for the water will be put on to this June's, uh, tax bill.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we send out a, a reminder notice to the residents that don't know?
It has diarias on it, so if you missed the, now it's quarterly versus six months, or every quarter, they're, the previous service balance is there, plus the penalty.
It has a past due balance.
Yeah, so it's on their bill, correct.
Understood.
Yeah, don't forget the penalty, yeah, yep. Alright, I'd like to make a motion for unpaid water charges to be re-levered to the tax bill, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is, um, so this is what we do yearly, the tre- um, we're gonna authorize the treasurer to make all required budget transfers, capital projects transfers, amendments, et cetera, et cetera, to close this fiscal year. Are there any questions, comments on that? It's something, it's something standard we do every year.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion for the treasurer to make all required budget transfers, capital project transfers and amendments, inter-fund transfers, adjustments and amend- amendments to close the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year as required for the annual audit, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is, um, a renewal of a peddler's permit. This is for the Pete's Fire Dog, and this is located, um, in front of Saint Christopher's Church on Albany Post Road. So it's a yearly renewal for the permit. So, um, any questions or comments from anyone before I, I read this? Okay. I'd like to mo- make a motion authorizing peddler's permits for Pete Colissar, uh, as Pete's, uh, Pete's Fire Dog. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, let's see, so also we have, um, a request for a peddler's permit for renewal by Anderson for the hours of ten AM to five PM. So are there any questions or comments on this peddler's permit?
And just to say, Cindy, you worked with them to meet the, to meet the minimum standard hours that the board has approved and passed.
Thank you, yeah, cause I know sometimes some of these companies want to be out till seven, eight o'clock or go through dinnertime, and, and you know, we don't want to disturb the residents, so. Alright, so I'd like to make a motion authorizing the peddler's permit for renewal by Anderson for the hours of ten AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with no holidays, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, the next is a motion, this is something we do every year, we hire seasonal help, and, um, we're going to approve that this evening, they will start working, um, sometime in May.
May ninth.
May ninth, okay. Okay. Alright, so I'd like to make a motion authorize the employment of seasonal help from May ninth, oh yeah, there it is, May ninth to August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at a rate of eighteen dollars an hour for the following, uh, people, this year we're hiring four. So one is Sean Stewart, Ryan Clark, John Golio, and Anthony, I think it's Penatary. Pen- Penatary, yeah?
Yeah, you said it right.
Okay, good, alright, um, so, um, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor I. Epstein.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next is, um, something we've been working on for a while. We are getting into an IMA with the Village of, uh, Croton regarding a dog control officer. We have been back and forth with this, uh, we went to the town to see if we could use their dog control, uh, people, and, um, we kinda hit a little roadblock, they were fine with their agreement part of it, but we had to go to the SPCA. And I believe the town was getting charged per month twelve hundred dollars for the SPCA, and they were going to charge us eight hundred. I did have a conversation with them explaining we're much smaller than the town of Cortland, there's twenty-three hundred residents compared to, I think the town is like thirty-five thousand, and the four hundred dollars, you know, a month difference was really, was ridiculous because we're so much smaller. And we have approximately, I asked the chief, three to five, um, dogs each year that there's a problem. You know, where we need to have that service. So the, uh, Village of Croton, um, was much more reasonable, and, um, I will read it, I will read the resolution when we get to it. But Lisa, I think this is something you wanted to, um, speak about? Oh, okay, alright. Yeah, if you, yeah, if you, yeah, if you want to.
I just wanted to, you know, what services are we, I'm sorry, I missed, I guess it was talked about at the workshop.
Yeah.
Sorry. So what services, oh, I'm Lisa Merkora at one sixty-two First Street. What services exactly are we gonna be getting from Croton? Just, like, I know we're calling it dog control officer, but the person for town of Cortland is, I think he's called animal control warden, so he addresses dog issues and cat issues. So what are, what are we gonna be getting from Croton?
So such services shall include being on call for stray dogs in the village and transporting any stray dogs to the village's animal shelter. Uh, it states here the hours of service, and then outside normal service hours, you know, who they need to contact. Uh, the village shall pay to the Village of Croton an annual contractual fee of twelve hundred dollars for these services. That is the information I have for this.
So as we con- as we continue to grow as a community, and our population is gonna be growing, and we're going into situations where we're doing apartment buildings, we are going, I believe we're gonna have more, this is where more animal issues will come up. So what are we, or do we have any coverage or any ideas for like cat issues that would come up? Because that, you just talked about dog issues. So like I said, with the town of Cortland, their animal control warden reports in, or at least it used to be that they reported in through code enforcement, not through the police, but anyway, that person, the recent person that came on in the last couple of years, he has pursued various types of training, gone to seminars, has gotten a lot of knowledge across animals, cats and dogs. I see, like, I'm on Nextdoor, the app, I see people always complimenting him that had issues that he helped with. I know we used to have a connection to the animal control of Cortland when it was Holly Carey. Holly had less hours, she was part-time, and when she wasn't on, she was off-duty, and I believe she wasn't on-call. Where Steve is part, he's half animal control, and when he's not animal control, he's parking. So in effect, he is double, because he's always on-call to handle any animal control issues, even if he's not on as an animal control, in his animal control hours. So anyway, I've heard really, really positive things about him, and I just want to make sure that we're getting the right coverage for our community, because once again, we don't just need dog control coverage with somewhere we can call about a call. We, we might need like the full range of animal control officer-type expertise as we continue to grow. Um, and then also, the question remains, if we're not gonna be affiliated with SPCA, who are we gonna be affiliated with? Because if it's Rescue Right, which is associated with Northwind Kennels.
I know, I heard the name.
I just had a question regarding the agreement along those same lines. I believe with the town, you'd mentioned that there's an additional charge for the SPCA, but here, there's a, a fee for the Village of Croton, but it says additional fee for a shelter that they bring the animal to. So do we know what that fee is, and do we know if it's less than this?
That, and I guess more importantly, Lisa's asking, do we know the facility or?
Well, also if we know the facility, because there's a little history with this. So with the town of Cortland, when the SPCA was redesigning, and, you know, they spent a lot of money to make their facility better, the town of Cortland went away from the SPCA and went to a different facility. They, I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but I believe, because I'm in kind of my new career as a dog walker, I hear a lot about this kind of issue, um, so I believe that they did have issues with the shelter that they were then affiliated with. It didn't have open hours, it didn't have the right capacity, it was very small. If it's the shelter that I'm thinking of, they have recently had multiple legal issues.
Okay.
With some types of arrest situations, so I just want to say, like, we want to make sure, the SPCA we know is upstanding. I just want to make sure whoever we get affiliated with is also.
Sure.
So, I don't know, did you, did we confirm?
I don't think, I don't think it was the people you're speaking of, um, I just can't think of their names.
And I don't want to say anything bad, like Northwind Kennels has been in business for a long time, and they have the shelter, the private shelter. And they have many people that love them, but, you know, maybe if they have capacity issues, it's not the right fit. So we just want to make sure we're affiliated with the, with someone that can help us when we have a problem. I mean, like, once again, if we have apartment buildings now, and there's gonna be like, I mean, I'm just thinking of my friends that I know from Peekskill, you know, there's litters of kittens, you don't, where are they gonna show up? At Peek- at the Buchanan Town Hall, at the Buchanan Village Hall, I mean, then you'll wish that you were with the SPCA, kind of, you know what I'm saying?
We do have someone in the village that takes in, um, cats, and there is, um, somebody, a woman from the city of Peekskill, I.
Susan Haywood.
Yes, yes, that also, um, takes in cats.
Yeah, so she's an expert in the area, and she, she mostly addresses Peekskill issues, that's like, cause she's from Peekskill.
But I think she's been here also.
She has, she, she does help in this area too, when she can. But I mean, uh, like I'm just saying, as we get bigger, we can't just rely, maybe we should consider not just relying on these people, Susan's been doing this for years, but she also gets very busy with Peekskill issues, and then her, and then she can't help everybody.
Right.
And as we grow, we may need to say that it's, at some point, we have to step up to the plate and cover our own issues. And not just, there are some rescues locally, but the people are getting older, they're aging out a little bit, it's just, I, I hope that we can make sure that we are covered. And once again, make sure we're affiliated with a good shelter, that doesn't have these legal issues.
So, so let me get on, on the cost issue, I, I, with the ASPCA, I don't know if there's a cost per day or something like that, but with the Village of Croton, I'm going through some of the emails, um, if a dog is, if a dog is not claimed, uh, if the police department brings a dog over, has not claimed, we'll be responsible to pay thirty dollars a day. After thirty days, the animal is considered abandoned, and it'll be, uh, abandoned, it'll be up for adoption. So the max, and as far as I know, I, I, we've had no dogs not being claimed. Um, so it's thirty dollars a day, after thirty days, they'll put the dog up for adoption, and nobody claimed the dog.
And the police are usually pretty good, you know, everybody goes on Facebook and they, they find the do- they find the dog.
Yeah, if you find a dog, like, the best thing is to like walk around the neighborhood, knock on doors, because someone's gonna know something.
That's what the police does, if they can't find them, then they, they'll take them.
So that's a worst-case scenario of nine hundred dollars a day compared to a, a flat out rate from, um.
Thirty dollars a day.
Thirty dollars a day.
Yeah, thirty dollars a day, but nine hundred for the month.
Nine hundred max, right.
Yes.
Up to thirty days.
And compared to the SPCA, it would automatically be whether we have any dogs going there or not is five hundred dollars a month. I'm just trying to, you know, give all the comparisons here. Marcus, you, did you find which kennel it was?
I'm, I'm looking for it. Just give me one more minute.
And then, you know, Lisa, so you know, yes, I know we have our own, but what we do with other municipalities, um, we do do inter-municipal agreements, and we do work together with one another, we also sharing of equipment. There's many different things that we, you know, we share and work together with.
Yeah, if there's some way that we know we would be covered in an issue, we have these helpers from other communities, I get it, but I just want to make sure that we are as we continue to grow.
And the only thing I want to say too, if that's a problem, you can also, we can always cancel the agreement with Village of Croton, and then go someplace else.
I think it's a thirty-day, uh, cancellation of the agreement.
Mhm.
I mean, the, the main thing is we had nothing in play for like the longest time, so we, we knew it had to be addressed, but I mean, unless we, and Mayor, unless you want to table it until we get some answers and, you know, as to the name of the kennel, I, you know.
What kennel does the city of Peekskill use, Lisa, are you familiar with that?
Um, I believe now they use the SPCA.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just I wish they, the SPCA, I, I do understand they have expenses, they built a beautiful new facility, but it's, you know, if we have, we have no dogs going in there at all, that's five hundred, five, six thousand dollars a year, and it's, you know, it's a lot of money. You know, we're, we're trying to do the right thing for the dogs, we're trying to do the right thing for the residents, you know, it's like, what is, where's the happy medium here?
Right.
Right, right, I just want to also, it's not just.
And I can say, if it doesn't work out, you're always canceled.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. At least we have something right now.
Besides the shelter, besides the shelter itself, and the dog person picking up a dog and driving it. Once again, like, when we had Holly Carey, and when we now would have Steve if we were part of town of Cortland, that is like an animal control expert that can help residents with issues. So like, we're. So like, we're not going to have that piece of the puzzle, or is this dog control officer of Croton going to do some of that kind of services for us?
I don't know how I agree with, with the town, would have been the same kind of agreement that she's referring to. I thought we would, we were talking about the same thing, just dog control. I don't think we were talking about all the aspects you're talking about.
But that's what Steve does.
But our agreement was with the, with the Town, with the Town of Cortland, now, now with Steve.
Do we know that this guy doesn't do what Steve does?
That's what I was going to ask. Do we know?
Right, that's what I want to know, like, is he, is our town, is, is the dog control officer that we would be getting, like, kind of like the services from, of Croton, kind of equivalent to what we would be getting from Town of Cortland's Animal?
Well, we haven't gotten any services from the town for years, so I.
Yeah.
Well, I think we, well, I think we used to get services loosely from Holly Carey. But she was not so, I think, that this is the kind of the way it went, that, you know, she wasn't very available. And so then, like, people stepped or the police stepped up or whatever. But she, she was still available, I mean, she, you know, lent some people traps and, they have traps there, they lend out to their residents. They have her go, now him, go when there's an issue and like, you know, look into it, follow up on it. So I mean, would, are we going to be getting that kind of service from anyone?
We are from the, from the Village of Croton, and, and I understand your concerns.
Yeah.
I think I am comfortable with what the Village of Croton is providing for the residents and the vetting that they did in that process. And I, you know, I'd feel comfortable moving forward, using their services for now. If there's an issue going forward, we could always switch it out, but I definitely appreciate your, your thoughts and concerns with it.
Okay, and then just one last thing, to make, are we going to pursue it all, making sure that if it is Northwind Kennels Rescue Right, that, once again, that they have the capacity to help us on dog and cat issues?
I think, you know, Lisa, if it doesn't work out, you know, we're willing to try this, because right now we don't have anything, as Dan said. So I, I feel comfortable right now approving this so that we have some service coverage. And then if it doesn't work out, then we go to the Plan B.
Yeah, let's just keep an open mind as we, as we go through the process, and if we need to make another change.
For now, it's just for dogs, though.
Yeah.
Because you're advocating also for cats.
Well, yeah, because we're going to be growing as a community, and we're going to have more things across the board. So, but, I mean, I know we're saying, like you brought.
We're starting, like the mayor said at one point, and we'll see how that goes. If more services are needed, then we would need to come back and discuss it.
We'll make adjustments as the process goes on.
But you gave us a lot of things to think about, and I appreciate that.
Well, once again, yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, I think it might be worth looking into, like, whether the shelter is, whatever shelter it's associated with, is in good position right now.
Right.
We also have to look at other angles, because you mentioned cats.
The village manager says they never had an issue with them.
So that would be discussions we also have to have with the residents.
That's what the village manager said.
Okay.
No, it's not about whether people keep their cats in or out.
No, I mean, the cat just goes off, so what if someone considers that cat to be a stray?
Well, there is that issue, but once again, right, but feral cat issues and like, a cat having kittens and there being more loose kittens that need someone to say, like, if we were associated with the SPCA, someone would bring a box of kittens to the SPCA. If we don't have anyone they were associated with, it could be a little bit of a bind.
I understand that.
When I, I spoke to the SPCA, they said that people from Buchanan do drop cats off there, and they do, they do take them.
Okay, well, that's nice of them.
Yeah.
And they'll do that even though we're not contracted with them?
If a resident does, but I don't believe if the dog warden does.
Yeah.
That's correct.
What was that?
If the resident does, but the dog warden, they will not accept it.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good. All right, well, anyway, those are just some points that I had, that I just wanted to make sure. Because Steve is good, people really like him, and it would be nice, it would be nice to have.
I got to meet this guy, Steve. I mean, this guy's amazing.
He, no, he's, I know you're being sarcastic, but.
No, I'm not, I've never even heard of him, but he seems like he's trained and, is he, like, is he involved with all kinds of animals? Like, not just dogs and cats?
They, they don't address wildlife issues.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, as an Animal Control, we have a specialist in the audience here.
I think it's just Animal Control, dogs and cats, I think it's domestic animals.
But this is, this is a job he has, correct?
Yeah, he's an employee.
Right, he's full-time with the town.
Okay.
But like a dual role.
He's an employee of the Town of Cortland, and if we chose that other option, we would have got him and SPCA. Now we're getting kind of like a dog, nameless person as the dog control officer, but you said they have a couple people trained there, right? And that's who they would send, right, it's just not a specific person.
If we're paying for the service, I hope they train.
They are absolutely.
Have hired this individual, so I have to believe that the Village of Croton did a wonderful job of selecting somebody highly qualified to do this.
Okay, right, no, Teresa told us last time, it was like whoever.
Yeah, it, it's just not a guy, you know, on the couch in Croton.
Were trained with these certain kinds of training programs, so, yeah, like I said, as long as we're, we're sure we're getting the services that we think we need.
Of course.
And we're willing to adjust it as we go forward if we find we need more services.
Yep.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Lisa, thanks for stepping up for the animals. Okay. So I'm going to read the intermunicipal agreement. Whereas the Village Buchanan and the Village of Croton on Hudson have had a longstanding relationship throughout the years, and whereas the Village Buchanan desires to have a dog control officer available to collect stray dogs within the municipal boundaries in accordance with Section 113 of the Agriculture and Markets Law. Whereas the Village Buchanan has requested the Village of Croton on Hudson Dog Control Officer also serves as the Dog Control Officer for the Village of Buchanan. And whereas this agreement is being entered into by the villages pursuant to Article 5-6 of the General Municipal Law. And whereas this agreement constitutes an intermunicipal cooperation agreement whereby the villages intend to clearly set forth the respective rights and obligations of each municipality. Now therefore, now therefore, for good and valuable consideration, the parties agree as follows. Dog control services, as necessary, the Village of Croton on Hudson hereby agrees to provide dog control officer services to the Village of Buchanan. Such services shall include beating, being on call for stray dogs in the Village of Buchanan and transporting any stray dogs to the village's animal shelter. And we will get back to you which, which animal shelter. I don't think it's the one that you mentioned, but, request.
So you'll find out the name?
Yes, yeah, but I, I don't remember that being the name. I'm sorry, it's not in, right in here. Requests for such services during normal business hours, 7:00 AM to 3:30, Monday through Friday, shall be made by contacting the Village of Croton on Hudson Department of Public Works by telephone. Requests for such services outside normal business hours shall be made by contacting the Village of Croton on Hudson Police Department by telephone. So I think what will happen in the village, the police department will contact this person, and it's, it's off-hours, so it's a different fee. The Village of Buchanan shall pay to the Village of Croton on Hudson an annual contractual fee of $1,200 for these services. Payment is due within 30 days of the date of this agreement. The Village of Croton on Hudson shall bill the Village of Buchanan for any veterinary services and shelter charges incurred related to dogs collected in the village. The Village of Croton on Hudson shall further bill the Village of Buchanan for any overtime incurred by the Dog Control Officer related to the services required under this agreement. The term of the agreement shall be for a period of one year. The villages shall begin discussing the renewal of this agreement 90 days prior to its expiration date. And then it gets into all the indemnification and all the liability, et cetera, et cetera. Insurance, the Village of Buchanan shall provide the Village of Croton on Hudson a certificate of insurance in accordance, in accordance with the requirements outlined in Appendix A of this agreement. Either party shall have the ability to determine the agreement at any time upon 30-day notice to the other party. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for dog control with the Village of Croton. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, information from officers and departments, justice court reports for April. I have one here, it's $2,953. Police report. Oh, sorry, it's right.
So for the police department, the statistics include, they gave out 31 moving summons, 15 parking summons, and they had a total of 190 calls, which included 17 calls for assisting citizens, 26 calls for service, 31 calls for violations or other compliance issues, and 30 property checks calls. All the other ones are below five calls.
Thank you. Highway report.
Household garbage, 76.48 tons. Balkan dumpsters, 17.77 tons. Dumpsters only, 7.17 tons. Metal, 2.7 tons. E-waste, two monitors, two TVs, one monitor. The highway department filled potholes, as you saw, they, they, this, this goes back to March 2025. So they did the parade route, they did maintenance pre, before and after the parade route. Striped the green line and measured, they did the measuring for our new no-parking signs and the restrictions, so. That's what they did in March of 2025, thank you.
Waste water report, treated wastewater, 10,774,000 gallons, 209,000 gallon sludge removal. There was a Westchester County Department of Health inspection, no violations reported. And Morabito Electric installed new LED pole lights for the lagoon, sludge-holding tank, and process treatment tanks outside. Okay, what's next here? Building department? Who did I give that one to? Is that you, Dan? Was it? Yeah, I think so.
You usually don't have it read off, but I'll read it off.
Oh, oh, yeah, last month it was kind of, here, yeah, there you go, thanks, Dan.
Sure.
Okay, good, thank you.
So for March 1st to March 31st, orders to remedy, there were three. Building permits issued and reviewed, 12. Inspection required by, for newly issued permits were 15. Inspections on file for permits and compliance inspections, 17. CFOs issued six. Compliance inspections for resale or refinance, three. Additional items, they also processed and served, 300 Blakely Avenue. Court date set for 4/8/2025, so that would have taken place. I don't know if we have an update on that.
We didn't go through, but the court didn't send a proper notification to the property owner, so it's been pulled off.
So that's where we are on that. And AMS construction site, moving along, LaBella inspections are taking place as planned. Zero maintenance, property maintenance issues reported, zero illegal apartments reported. And there were three compliance inspections awaiting reinspection for new CFOs.
That's it. Thank you.
So Peter's busy.
Yeah, a little bit. Buchanan Engine?
All right, Buchanan Engine Company for the month of March 2025, there were 14 total alarms. Six of those were EMS assist and five mutual aid given, two gas emergencies, a police assist, and one automatic alarm.
All right, thank you. No prosecutors report, the zoning board minutes for February 12th and March 12th received and filed. And, okay, got both of those. All right, attorney's report, anything for us today, Steph?
The only thing I have is that we are still, I am still working with the Buchanan Engine Company Council to try to get that contract signed and approved.
So, thank you.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Marcus, what do you have for us today?
Just to provide the board with the update, the grant application for the hook truck has been finally, went to the first phase of approval by the state. Now it's being sent to the state legislature to approve, and then it'll go to DASNE, so keep your fingers crossed. Might be a couple months before we hear anything with this process, so, but at least the, the grant has been approved for the first phase. Just to let the board know. And then the only other thing, I have some, an executive session to update on the PBA negotiations. If you give me a couple minutes, we can discuss that at tonight's, and executive, if you don't mind.
Yep, no, that'd be great. Okay, so I just have some announcements. Annual street sweeping that's done by Cook is May 12th and 13th. I will put out a code red as a reminder for the cars to get off the road. We want the, the sweeper to be able to go curb-to-curb to clean up the, the winter salt and sand. The Town of Cortland Memorial Day Ceremony will be Friday, May 23rd at 1:00 PM. And this is a change of venue, it's at the Town Hall, not at the Morabito Center. Frank G. Lindsay Memorial Day Parade is on May 22nd at 1:00 PM. The route is Bannon Avenue from Kings Ferry to Seward Street. And unfortunately, there's no Buchanan Berplank Parade this year. It's, it's always cute, I, I like to go to the BV School Parade, that, you know, the kids are just adorable, but, I'm very excited. Flags and just, you know, the speeches are just very heartwarming. Also, it's the Tri-Village, each year, the Tri-Village, each fire department takes a turn at the Memorial Day Parade. This year, it will be Cortland Engine, the Montrose Fire Department. Dan, do you have the details of what time that is? We could put it on Facebook too.
I, I don't.
Okay, we could put it on Facebook too, and let, let people know when Memorial Day Parade is, plus we have a workshop before.
He had a flyer in our mailboxes last month, but.
I didn't bring it with me, unfortunately, but we can put it out and advertise that. And on Sunday, I was invited, we, the board was invited to the Cortland Engine Company Memorial Day Breakfast. It's always a very nice event. I always, you know, like to support our neighbors, we do do mutual aid, and it's good to get along with our neighbors. Like I said, it's always a nice event, and I, I was the only elected official there. The town, nobody from the town showed up, so I, I don't know, but like I said, I, I always enjoy getting invited to that. The other thing is, I, I want to, I want to apologize from the Village of Buchanan for those people in the area of the construction on Albany Post Road that had to deal with loud noises on a Friday night at 11:30. That is very much against our code. Our code is from 8:00 to 7:00 PM. There's, you can do noise after that, it is, there is no construction noise, there is no noise. And also, on Sunday mornings, you can't start making noise until 10 o'clock. So I know those people in that area were very upset. Hopefully, the message got through that we don't make noise at those hours. And also, I was understanding that they were starting at 6:45. I had the building inspector go over there, have a conversation with them to, you know, make them understand what the hours of operation would be. So apologies, apologies on that, it will not happen again. And I think, I think that's all I have for this evening. Anna Wilter, what do you have for us?
So in response to Dan's concern, you had a concern about the dirt bikes. I just want you to know, I spoke to the chief, the chief has been meeting with the individuals that are using those bikes inappropriately, and he's been providing summonses.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wilter.
Because a lot of people are complaining about that, so.
He said to let the board know who's on.
Yeah, and, you know.
Oh, so Dan, at the last meeting, Dan expressed a concern about individuals that are riding dirt bikes up and down the roads, and they're not being responsible in their use. So I spoke to the chief, and the chief said that he is working with the town. He's speaking to these individuals, and he's providing summonses when it's needed.
Thank you, good. Anthony, what do you have for us tonight?
Not much. I did go to the AMS site after the complaint was, was, I, I didn't get a complaint, I didn't hear anything about a complaint. I just saw that it was on social media. So, but I did go to the site and did some, you know, just checked on some data with them, and trustee Stewart came with me. I went over with them the, the, you know, what our code is for, for them starting early, working late. They explained to me the situation, and I think that they understand clearly, I was there with Peter as well, that, you know, what our code is, so I, I don't, I don't think that it will happen again. I think that they're, it was a mistake, there was a delivery brought in late at night, that their, their security allowed in was not supposed to allow it. So that complaint on Facebook was, was the only place that I saw it, so. But it was, we did talk to them about it, and they probably will not be doing, hopefully will not be doing it again. And as far as the construction over there is going very, very smoothly. They are way ahead of what I thought they'd be ahead of, considering they worked through the winter. And you're going to see the building go up quickly now. And it, it's actually a nice site, the guy is really doing a great job. They have their weekly toolbox meetings, everything is done safely and correctly. They have their weekly toolbox meetings, everything is done safely and correctly. And our Debel, our Debella, right, Debella? Our consultant is there doing inspections weekly for their hookups with sewer water, everything that would concern us. Storm tech runoff, stormwater runoff, everything has been done properly and there is data on everything that they have done. Other than that, I have nothing else to say, but I, I was pleased with what they, what's going on over there.
Thank you. Steve, what do you have for us?
Sure, just a couple of things. So, you know, every month, I know Cindy, Sharon, and you guys do a great job on the minutes. We get a very detailed summary of, of what the minutes are for the meeting, but I know that they are extremely labor intensive. And in today's day and age, there has to be some other software, whether it's AI or even, I know a lot of times Zoom and YouTube provides a transcript. Some other way that we could provide minutes, you know, as the legal requirement is needed. But to take the burden off of our staff, I think would, would kind of be best use of resources.
Yeah, that, that started coming out during Zoom, I mean, during the COVID pandemic, there are application. But that's, that's a transcribed, every single word that's, that's stated, it's not going to be a hundred percent. That means that we'll have to review every single word that's been stated at the meeting to make sure that's what was actually stated at the meeting. So if we do use one of those applications, indeed, is every single word, what they're trying to give you is a summary of the, of the minutes. So it's like, it's.
But is it stamped, I mean, our staff doesn't have to review that. It's stamped by the company and it's verified by the company.
They're, they're, they're saying it's, it's used for transcribing, but they always say it's not guaranteed a hundred percent because it depends how the word is taken. So they're gonna, someone will have to re- read everything to make sure that what was stated was exactly what was written down during, during the, we can try it out, but.
There has to be something in today's day and age.
Zoom, Zoom, Zoom will take every single word.
Because right now, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but they have to sit and watch the meeting, sometimes several times. In two or three hours, a four hour meeting could be six, eight, ten hours worth of time to transcribe the minutes. It just seems like it's, it's really unproductive. Yeah.
We used to have somebody, remember Sue years ago, that had the little, what do they call that?
She was a stenographer.
A stenographer.
And then she'd have to review that and everything, but, yeah, it's, it's, it is.
You don't mind, do you?
I love it.
I know you do. You just can't wait to get home to start on today's minutes, right? You are amazing.
Do you want, I can actually turn it on at the next meeting and.
I don't know whether that's the answer, maybe there's some other, but there has to be something out there that, that's available, that's all.
Yeah. There's Zoom, and there was another company, I forgot what it was, was used for transcribing the meeting. But like I said, it's every single word that's stated, so it'll be pages worth of pages versus maybe a summary. But they're trying to take the summary of what's being said versus every single word that's stated.
For us to review pages, I think is, is, you know, I would take that burning on as opposed to having our staff spend ten hours.
Yep, so there's two different applications.
Two hour, you know, two hour meeting.
Yep, there's two different applications. I could turn them both on and if that's the, that's when you're.
Maybe we try to test it.
Do a try run, see what it.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm not giving you up yet. We're going to test it. Don't throw away your, your computer.
The other thing I had, you know, I think we did a great job last month with the budget. I was very, you know, happy with, with the way that ended up. And I know we, we had discussed, you know, one of the ways to, to assist going further in the future is to look at the expenses. And, you know, there's a lot of contractual expenses that we can't control, but there's a lot of other expenses. And I, I look primarily towards engineering and planning. That, you know, every time, and I think just us as a board, as a staff, needs to realize that every time we pick up the phone and we call either our engineer or our planner, we get charged, just like, you know, they're, they're not in-house employees. So, you know, I noticed recently, just signing vouchers, that, you know, with the engineer, there was, there was a grant writing administration. And I believe we had hired a grant writer just to kind of, you know, alleviate some of that previously.
No, the grant writer will do just to write the grant, he does to do the administration. All the paperwork has to be filed to either, for the DEC or the state. There's a whole bunch of backup documentation as it's been filled out.
But the issue last time with the grant was because of the administration. It wasn't the engineering, it was the actual administration of the grant. And so we took that away from the engineering firm and, and had a grant writer, my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was, it was for the writing of the grant.
Right.
The, the engineer wrote the grant and that's why it was denied, because it was missing a stamp. So we hired the grant writer to reapply and then we got the order to the grant. But no, I, there's no grant writer to do the administration requirement of the state requirements. That's the problem.
And then there's a lot of engineering documentation that we have to.
That part, yeah.
And we are, just to let you know, I understand, I, I understand the expense. Under we are on WQIP, his engineering cost is actually reimbursable through the grant. So that won't cost the village, we have to reimburse this. We actually got.
Just as an example, and I know there's a lot of discussion before I got on the board regarding no parking in the direction of Church Street. I don't know where it is right now, but I know we spent a lot of money on engineering just based on the invoices that I saw. So it's just something to consider, unless we're going to move forward with something, we really have to look at the cost. Because every time we, we have a discussion, it costs money. So, and then just the last thing, I believe the beautification committee has their annual plant sale on Friday and Saturday.
The ninth and the tenth. Thank you, Steve, yes.
Thank you.
They'll be out at the circle, ten to, ten to two, I think it is. And also, you know what we forgot? Happy Mother's Day, everyone. Thank you to all the mothers out there. Thank you for everything you do. Dan, what do you have for us?
Well, you guys stole my thunder on the beautification committee, but that, that's okay. But, yeah, try and get there for the plant sale, but as always, they always do a wonderful job to decorating the circle, you know, for the different change of seasons and so forth. So thank you again to them. Glad to see we finally have a rough draft of an HR employee handbook. Look forward to getting it finalized and.
Been reading it.
Yep.
Page by page.
Teresa mentioned the street sweeping starts next week. The, the, the paper signs are out, I believe the police department put those out as well. So just be cognizant of it, try and keep the cars off the streets so they can do a good job of it. And, oh, the, the parade, I did find the parade announcement, Teresa, so here we go. It's, the parade will be Monday, May the twenty-sixth. Parade starts at eleven AM sharp and the lineup will be on Meadow Road and Montrose at ten fifteen. And it goes down Kings Ferry Road and at the end of Montrose Veterans Park for a ceremony by the American Legion.
All right, good, thank you.
And then I just, again, happy Mother's Day to all the moms, so.
I also just want to say something about the beautification committee because of the weather on Friday. I've offered my eaves for them to set up under there so that they don't get drenched, because it looks like it's going to rain all week. So it, for Friday, it'll be a change of location. It'll be on Lindsay Avenue under the eaves. So look for them, look for them there. All right.
Could I say something?
Sure, yeah.
So just want to share, sitting in this seat, there are a lot of events that we're invited to. And I just want to say that other than being a mom, a grandma and a wife, I work as a consultant and I also do volunteer work. So if I miss an event, please know it's not because I didn't want to be there, I just could not.
It happens, you know, we're all, we're all busy and we all have lives and it's, it's.
We have other responsibilities, yes.
Absolutely.
I want to put it out there that not every event we can attend.
But we try. Comments from the floor? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hi, Nick Zachary.
Hey, Nick.
Katie Tate, Buchanan. Sorry, I was, ran a few minutes late and you guys moved quickly in the beginning. So this is an after the fact question on the zoning change to seventy-five percent for the M1, M2 zones. I think that, that figure is kind of based on the overlay, which is seventy-five percent. But the text of the overlay, in the text of the overlay, it says that the planning board at its discretion may allow up to seventy-five percent, which implies if we deem it to be inappropriate in a, in a specific case for any reason, because, you know, the situations of each property vary. If we, so, so it seems to imply that we can go under seventy-five percent in a site plan process if we feel that's necessary. Is that the same case with this new, with this change that was made tonight?
No, it went from fifty to seventy-five.
Seventy-five to seventy-five. So the planning board cannot, in a slight plan, yeah, I mean, am I wrong? Because if in the overlay, the warding actually says the zoning board has the discretion to go up to seventy-five percent. So, but in this case, the, I'm sorry, not zoning board, planning board. So in this case, the planning board is tied to that figure or is there a site plan? Is there any discretion in the site plan review is my question. Sounds like an answer from Stephanie.
There's no discretion. They changed it from forty percent, I think, in the M1 and fifty percent in the M2 to seventy-five percent. And that comes from a lot of, I mean, it comes basically from the uses over there, which are a lot different than.
In the overlay, yeah, okay.
And people have been coming in for variances, and so rather than keeping variances.
Right.
You know, answer the call.
Okay, in the, in the overlay, though, it is, there is a discretion. Okay, that was my question. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. Anyone else? There she is.
I just want to know if anybody, if Peter Cook got in touch with any of the board members and the mayor regarding Rolindo on the corner of White and Albany Post Road?
He got a permit to cut the trees now.
He did?
Yes, he did.
Okay, all right, because I, I looked at that and I went, holy mackerel, because he cleared the whole hill.
He's coming back because the building is going to go in that area, so he's.
Really?
He's preparing to come to the planning board with his new site plan.
Okay.
Well, he's got electric on that property now too, if you see where he put.
He just temporary, he just moved that, yeah, temporary electric.
Okay.
And Eileen, last time I, he was out there when he took the building down that day, I, I asked him what his plans were. And it was, he was going to put two, on the, on the ground floor, two businesses, two commercial places, and then two apartments upstairs. So that, that's coming directly from him, so we'll, we'll see what he, you know, brings in front of the planning board. Okay. All right, if there are no further comments, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all and have a great Buchanan day.
Thank you.